Good evening, I will now call the Monday, November 17th meeting to order at 6 o'clock PM. At this time, I will have Ms. Knight introduce our students Kylie Hutto and Rachel Bars, who will give our prayer and lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight.
As the girls step forward, I'd like to introduce, I have the pleasure of introducing Kylie Hutto and Rachel Bars, both juniors at Madison County High School and newly elected officers of Club America. These two leaders are highly involved on campus, dedicated to their academics, and committed to serving their school and community. Kylie Hutto is a hard-working student athlete who plays volleyball and softball. She is an active member of FFA, Beta Club, Honor Society, HOSA, FCA, and Student Government. Her involvement highlights her leadership, character, and passion for representing Madison County High School with excellence. Rachel Bars is equally as impressive, competing in volleyball and participating in FFA, Beta Club, National Honor Society, HOSA, FCA, and Student Government. Her dedication to school involvement and her strong sense of responsibility make her an outstanding leader. Outside the classroom and athletics, both Kylie and Rachel both enjoy hunting in the outdoors. They are faithful members of First Baptist Church of Madison, where they continue to grow their values and leadership. Together Kylie and Rachel bring energy, commitment, and heart to service at Madison County High School. We look forward to their positive impact as they will serve us through the year. If everybody would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are gathered here today with the great opportunity to serve our students, families, staff, and community. Please give us wisdom on making decisions that will shape your life, provide future generations to come. Please give us clarity and patience in our discussion, help us to continue to lead with compassion and perseverance. Both each and every school, we champion and grows a student better representative than any. We would thus get out of this meeting and make a bid ahead. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you ladies.
Thank you.
At this time, Dr. Pickles has a recognition to make.
Well, we have a few recognitions. So, as we know, students who attend school regularly have been shown to achieve at higher levels than those who do not have regular attendance. So to focus on closing our student and staff attendance gaps, we have implemented a program of rewarding perfect attendance for both our students and our staff. So tonight, we would like to recognize several of our students who had perfect attendance during the first nine weeks. Staff will be recognized later this week. So at this time, Ms. Brown, I'll call you up to recognize your students.
We had a large number of students who were excited about perfect attendance, so the names we put into...
A little wheel of fortune.
And we had students from between our pre-K and second grade, third through fifth, and sixth through eighth that were going out. Our sixth or eighth grade board winner could not come tonight, she had higher obligations. But for pre-K and second grade, we have Jameer Davis, kindergarten.
Handsome.
And then we have Hot Deere Hall. Kylie Dickinson was our recipient from middle school.
Can they step around a little bit? You just can see the top of his head.
Thank you for coming to our meeting tonight.
So I do have a $50 gift card for each of them at this time.
Dana, you want to come and try and take a picture?
So if you have pains to come to school.
Yes, it does, ma'am.
So if you're not able to school.
So... So if you guys will stay for just a minute after we recognize our high school student, we want to get a picture with everybody.
Dr. Cunningham, if you would come on up and recognize your student.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. I have the pleasure of introducing Mr. Carter Adams. He's in the ninth grade. Come on up, Carter. He's a little nervous. And we do know, as the students get older, their attendance tends to fall, and so I'm very proud of you for staying focused and doing what you need to do.
Oh, thank you. And Carter, we have a $50 gift card for each of you.
Do you want us all to get a picture?
If you're free, you'll come up here.
Yes, please. With their principal as well.
I'm here, I'm taking it.
You just have to stand right there and speak to us.
I'm good. I saw you guys stay in church. Okay, he was just looking at me.
You're making me look tall for a change.
Thank you.
I'm good. I'm good.
So proud of you guys. Good job.
Thank you for indulging me again. Staff will receive their gift cards later this week, prior to our break.
All right, we will now move to the agenda, and we have a few items to add to our agenda. We pulled an item at the last regular meeting, and we will add that back, and then also we will add another item that we were awaiting coverage from the insurance carrier. So we will be adding item 5.5. That will be the supplement salary schedule for MCCS and the supplement salary schedule for MCHS.
So what did we pull? Did we pull anything?
No ma'am, we're not pulling. No ma'am, we're adding. And then we will add item 5.6, which will be Keane's Portable Buildings, and that will be what we were waiting on insurance for.
And I'll talk more about that when we get there.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I would like to ask to, request to add a amendment to the agenda as well. I would like us to revisit the conveyances that we discussed with Attorney Reeves at the last board meeting to, I would like to make some recommendations of some additional items to be included.
So who is that going to?
We're going to make that 5.7.
Yes. We will add 5.7. And then, let me write that on my agenda real quick. And with that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to, I'm going to like to make a motion under surplus items. I don't know, I talked to the superintendent about this.
Okay.
Does that have to be?
No. You want to do it during that?
We can do it, yes, yes, that's fine.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I move to approve the agenda as, with the additions.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, all in favor of approving the agenda as amended? We have a motion by Ms. Gibson and a second by Ms. Hagan. Do we have any discussion before we vote? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor?
Uh.
Five zero, Ms. Tammy. Okay. We currently do not have any comments from the public. Is that right, Ms. Tammy? Okay, so we will move on to the consent agenda. All right, so on the consent agenda, we have item 4.1 Minutes, 4.2 North Florida College Agreement, 4.3 Grant Approval, 4.4 MCHS Basketball Master Schedule. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay. Do we have any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I will ask for a vote. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda? Motion was made by Mr. Carroll and seconded by Ms. Knight. All in favor? Five zero, Ms. Tammy. All right, we will move on to our items for individual consideration. Item number 5.1 is staff travel. Dr. Pickles.
Under our staff travel, we have quite a few items to buy. So Ms. Roderick would like to attend a winter conference, which will be paid for out of her grants. Ms. Wend is requesting a food service conference, which will come from the food service budget. Ms. Williams and Ms. Laris for a high school high-tech, which will come from the funding source there. Mr. Williams would be going to an avid training, which will come from our Title II. Ms. Thompson will be going to attend a conference later this week, which is totally grant-funded, provided through there. And then, we have the privilege of sending a district team, so school, leadership, math teachers, and then our district curriculum, to do math practice through the PACE Consortium, and that will come from our Title II. They have already attended a virtual workshop just past Thursday, and then they will go in December. So I do recommend your approval.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Pickles. Do I have a motion to approve the staff travel?
I move to approve the staff travel.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
Okay. Any discussion on the staff travel? Hearing none, I will now ask for a vote. All in favor of approving the staff travel? Five zero, Ms. Tammy. We will now move on to item number 5.2, Job Description Updates. Dr. Pickles.
So the first job description was the bus driver, Mr. Tyrone. He had come up before and talked about bus drivers as very hard to find. He can find bus drivers, they may have their CDL with the passenger endorsement, but they may not have a high school diploma or GED. So it's very difficult for him to find bus drivers. So when looking at our qualifications, the only change I made was putting preferred. So if we could get some more bus drivers in, we could also try to then encourage them to enter our GED program if they do not have a high school diploma or GED. So that would be that change, and hopefully this will be able to help him and assist him in reaching some more candidates in our pool over here. So are there any questions on the bus driver job description?
Don't have any questions or comments, because we have lots of experts. They do not have that GED, not high school diploma. They're experts on those trucks, and they have experience that we're looking for. So I think that is a good make, that we're about to make, a good fix.
The second job description is a child find parent educator. So you should be able to see all the markup in there. So this was a older job description, and so I'm calling it a child find. I have updated it and added in a few qualifications, so if it's somebody that comes in with an associate's degree, so we would at least want that, preferred bachelor's degree, so that we can then actually have them have the bachelor's degree and have them certified, contain their certificate through DOE. So the intent of this position, there are approximately about 20 children waiting and in the process of coming either through Head Start in the pipeline, or through our five open houses that we have held, that are waiting to go ahead and enter into our pre-K program. So it's trying to work with these families, and actually also go out into the community and work with these families, and so it'd be that first point of contact. So it's more that type individual, go into the churches, go out to the community, and it's, so it's that person. So that's this particular position here. So are there any questions on that job description?
Is it specifically for pre-K?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
And they will be a parent facilitator also.
Yes. So any questions on that one? And so I do ask for your approval on these two.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Pickles. Hearing those, Job Description Updates, do I have a motion to approve the job descriptions?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the job description.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Ms. Knight, a second by Ms. Gibson. Do we have any discussion? All in favor of approving the job descriptions? Five zero. All right, we will move to item number 5.3, Highland, and Mr. Tyrell Ansley will come up. Hi, Mr. Tyrell, thank you for coming.
Thank you, good afternoon, how's everybody?
Wonderful, thank you.
Awesome. Well, Mr. Copeland and myself, we was trying to come up with a way to try to help the district save money, to be beneficial and safe to our students. Well, Highland was something that had came to us, a grant that can help us to actually save money and also cut costs. So I was just looking, because one of, when it was came to me, I approached it as a parent. And as a parent having a son that rides a school bus, I'm wondering, if my child is on the bus, will he be safe? And I know that's a question that some of you probably have. Well, my question when I got to Highland, I asked him, "Well, we have a lot of flooding here, and we're prone to hurricanes. So what happens in a place, what happens like that?" Well, they were sure that those batteries have casings, so those casings help secure the batteries from catching on fire. So also with that, when you do specs of a school bus, there are certain items that you have to have. So when you think about Tesla catching on fire, people getting trapped, well, school buses are totally different. Why are they different? Because we don't have electrical windows on buses. We have to have doors that they have to get through and hatches, so our kids just can't get trapped in them, and we have to do, perform two emergency drills a year to make sure. So I looked, and I seen when electrical buses had came, like, for, just for the US, around 2010. As of now, there are over 5,100 electrical school buses, and it's committed to serving over 265,000 students around the United States. So I Googled, I wanted to see, well, does it save money? It says, "Electrical school buses saves money, it lowers the operational costs, also it reduces maintenance, and the total cost of ownership is bare minimum." So there are, with the findings, I think this would be a really good thing to help us save money. We talked to some of the other districts that do it, and they said what they did is they went this route, and it's helping them to save money, and also if they want to buy electrical buses in the future, they can. So I think this would be a very good investment for our district. I think it's safe, I wouldn't want to put my son on something that I wouldn't think was safe, and I think it'll be really good for us. So that's what I have. Anybody have any questions for me? And there was 27 fires of electrical buses within, ever since 2010, but total with that, you have over 300 fires a year in your regular school buses. So there's bare minimum damage to the electrical buses. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have put literally hours into this, checking it out, reading, asking questions. I, probably too much time. Okay, now, I'm not saying I'm totally against it, I'd like to know where the savings is coming in.
So your savings come in for, like, maintenance costs, or fuel. We, with, I don't have the exact numbers right now, but when you think about just going out there and fueling up a bus, you're paying about $3.97 a gallon. You don't have that fuel cost anymore. Also, when it comes to your maintenance, you're cutting the cost of the maintenance, because a lot of parts that you have to work on, you won't have those parts anymore, because they're electrical, just like an electrical heater or something. So that's where your cost saving comes for maintenance and also your fuel.
Yes, I've heard a lot about the parts, not being able to get the parts, that's been an issue, and also getting someone to work on it, because, I mean, these were facts, see, I'm not making it up as I go along. And so that's what worries me. Now, then again, I'd like to know exactly, because according to what we were given today, this is for eight buses. Now, we've dropped down to five, in other words, I need to know, like, for instance, Duke Energy, how much is the cost going to be there?
That's, yeah, that was my question.
In other words, what you...
We have an expert up there who has been in the field answering the question.
Okay, well, maybe you can...
Thanks for the questions. I'd say on the maintenance piece, under our contract, we provide a maintenance reimbursement for parts and labor. And so while parts can be difficult to get, it's not just for EV buses, it's for all buses. But on our side, working with EV buses across the country and all three major OEMs, we actually do source parts and help them source parts, even working with the local dealers to alleviate that time a bus may be down, and that's with diesel or EV, that's broader supply chain issues. But we're operating our EV buses at a higher percentage than diesel buses are operating, and that's not just Highland, there's companies like First Student who operate a ton of diesel and EVs, and they're actually operating theirs above their diesel percentage as well. And so our main focus is making sure the buses remain operational, given that we are in a supply-constrained world for all parts. So under our contract specifically, more broadly, there's 90% fewer moving parts on the EV bus, and so the maintenance is actually pretty simple, the caveat being high voltage. So we provide training on both minor repairs for EV that may differ from a diesel, but then anything high voltage, we work locally with our technicians or through the dealer. And so we don't want it to be an operational burden, we really strive in every way we can to make sure it's easy to work on and easy to repair. But again, parts and labor are fully reimbursed under our model. On the fuel side, you can estimate anywhere between 30% to 40% of savings. We're very comfortable just adding energy into the contract directly and covering those costs. I could get you an exact number, but I think we estimated under your mileage around the $2,500 a year, which would be 40% of your diesel cost, very comfortably. We typically do bundle energy into our contract, but if there's more flexibility that you want to add on mileage or using them for extra activities, we're fine just having it run under Duke and Energy and have you pay it directly. At any point, if you did want to bundle it under our service and have us pay for that, we basically tie it to a guarantee, to where we know exactly what we're going to pay, and we'll buy futures against the energy, so it's set within the contract. But I'm giving you a lot of information, I apologize. Regardless of which way you go, what our team will do is do charge management for you to make sure that it's charging at the most affordable and optimal times.
Well, that sounds good, but we still don't have the facts and the figures. In other words, we, how can I approve something when I'm not, I don't know what the repercussions are? That's what worries me about this. Now, I know, and I can, this is an example, and it's not your company, that millions have been spent on purchasing buses in Miami, Broward, those buses now are sitting, unused, parts, labor, trying to get someone to work on. The company did go out of business. This isn't, this is a very beginning thing, this hasn't been around a long time, and your company hasn't been around a long time. If you, you were established in 2019, so I know you're trying to do all the good stuff, but I'm very, it worries me.
Highland. Is that where you first, the Highland? No, I know that, this is Highland here.
Yes. It was, it was an article that I read about a company that was involved...
Okay, I didn't know, because it was just put on the desk.
No, that's, that's something that I found on my own.
That was a, with Miami, they had bought a few vehicles from Proterra. There was a few cities that did. Proterra did go bankrupt. Anyone we work with is a major manufacturer of buses, so you get your three main bus manufacturers. So that's Bluebird, Thomas, IC. They've all been around quite some time and invested pretty heavily into the EV space with pretty, with very successful partners. So the bankruptcies we saw were on new companies that had to take on a lot of funding and did it unsuccessfully, but we work with major OEMs that do operate the same diesel buses that are in the yard as well.
I mean, as far as safety, I feel like our students are safe right now. I mean, we wouldn't let them get on a bus if it weren't safe. I mean, it's, they're kind of like, some, they'll feel good about themselves, there's some feeble excuses out there. I mean, I rode a bus for 12 years, I didn't feel good or bad about riding it, it was just someplace that'd take you from here to there. Yeah, the Duke Energy, I'm worried, I'm wondering about that. Well, let me ask you this, how much was each, do you have the latest figures on this? Like, how much will each bus cost? Because this is eight buses here.
Eighteen thousand.
It's going to be eighteen thousand?
Eighteen thousand per bus.
Okay, that's per year?
Per year.
Okay, that's per year. Okay, now what is this base service fee? An annual fee per vehicle equal to 26,000? What does that mean?
That's, that is an outdated contract, it's the 18,000. So the document that you've been providing...
So that, that is, this eighteen...
The one that was uploaded was an incorrect contract. The one he just gave us is the correct figure.
Okay, well, see, we just got it right now, then. That's, I've been going by what's on, on the agenda.
I read it in the packet now, I was satisfied with what was in the packet, but I know that gasoline is more combustibles than electricity, and you can run in the back of whatever, and that whole bus will blow up. That's what I was thinking, and what I was reading in this, what we had been given. So I was thinking maybe this was the better, safer concern than the gasoline.
These figures that he provided this evening match the PowerPoint presentation.
And then we had it in our pocket, too, some information in our pocket.
Well, I read everything there was to read about it, too.
So on the, on the original, on the contract that was uploaded, there's a Transportation Equipment Services Agreement, and I think that's where Ms. Gibson is getting the $26,000 figure per bus. So you're saying that this agreement that we got today takes the place of that one, that it's not, we're not adding the two? It's the...
So like, all, there's, there's two documents, that's the Sourcewell quote that ties to the larger contract. The larger contract that is uploaded into the board documents, the price and services will match the PowerPoint and that Sourcewell document. The one that states 26,000 is outdated and the incorrect version, it will match this document.
So we're talking about 18,000?
18,000.
So we're looking at number 10A, base service fee?
Yes, ma'am.
And Ms. Carroll, when it comes to the vehicle sitting...
You'll have to speak into the microphone.
When it comes to the vehicles that are, you mentioned that they might be sitting for X amount of time for parts or whatever the case may be, just know that you will not, the district will not be paying if the, if the bus is not operable, it's a reimbursement to the district.
Yeah, but we need the buses, though.
No, for sure, 100%.
We might get paid for them to sit there, but in the meantime, we need the bus.
I understand.
And it almost sounds like, I know you built that in, this almost sounds like this is, might happen, so, so that even bothers me a little bit, to tell you the truth. In other words, are you expecting them to be parked?
We are, it's just a performance problem, it's guaranteed. Just to give you that warm and fuzzy.
I have a question about the excess mileage fee. It's $3 per mile per vehicle per contract here above the annual mileage allowance. What is the annual mileage allowance?
I believe we had landed on, it was slightly, it was slightly under 8,000, we increased it to 8,000 and added 500 miles of local room. In this contract case, we're actually not the providers of energy, and so we're, to be honest with you, we're quite indifferent on what that number is. We've never charged an excess mileage fee. That isn't to say that we could not, it is in the contract, but we could...
I was going to say, we're a very rural district with a lot of miles to travel.
Yeah, we're happy to put the, the number right now is above the miles that were expected on the routes that we're going to be servicing Tyrone's routes, but we can, we can utilize whatever.
And that's, I mean, that's a pretty hefty amount, $3 per mile per vehicle per, that's excessive.
So these buses that we're getting, we plan on keeping them local, but then our local routes on town lines, this one we plan on...
Put you in the microphone. People, people at home can't hear you, that's why.
We plan on keeping these buses that we're getting local, and these local buses will be used around, right outside of town, so we should not occur nowhere close to that mark or going over. Yes, we don't want to put them in our rural areas.
So can you, right now, just, it doesn't have to be exact, give me an approximate number of the routes that you run that are in town that would fit within this annual mileage that we're talking about here?
I can give you about 10 of them.
10 routes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
That's his question. There would be a condenation, because we know that eight buses won't...
That's his question. There would be a combination, because we know that eight buses won't furnish all the transportation needs we have, so it will be a combination of the electrical buses and then the fuel buses?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
About 25% or 30%, that would be your good minutes.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
And did, when they, when you charge them, are they good for 130 miles? That's what I think I read.
Yes.
So they've got to be charged probably almost daily, I would think.
Yeah, safely.
So this is where Duke Energy kicks in, you know? In other words, so that's the part that I, we don't know. That's the unknown, you know, what...
Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Gibson, looking back at our average three-year fuel costs, I don't have it on a per-mile basis, but on, I think we have 30 active buses, 22 that are really active, eight in reserve. We're running about, around 5,000 a year in, in fuel costs, is what my calculation of it. And about 4,000 maintenance costs, so with the parts and, uh, the...
You're talking about per bus?
Per bus.
Yes, per bus, sorry.
Okay.
So it's, it's a little bit less our actual cost than what was estimated in the presentation. I think I'll have 12, 12,000 per minute, but it's comparable, so that would give you some, some base numbers for all of them.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
So the question that I had, gentlemen, I do have the email response here. I inquired about the relocation of the equipment to charge the vehicles. You know, obviously, the infrastructure to install this is not cheap, and since the relocation of the district office is potentially in the pipeline, you know, my concern is investing that type of money in setting this up and then having to relocate it a year from now. And what, you know, and granted, I see the response where, you know, you guys will work with us in the cost of relocating that equipment, but, I mean, like, how expensive is, I just don't want to put another expenditure on the district when we're trying to tighten our, our belt.
Yes. So most of the equipment would transfer. The pieces that would not would be Duke Energy's.
Okay.
And so a bit of it's, I don't want to give you a roundabout answer, a little bit of it's reliant on what incentives Duke Energy would have at the time. If they had no incentives, I would estimate they'd probably be $30,000 to $40,000 from the utility side.
Okay.
And then our side would simply be contractor work.
Okay.
To move the equipment from one site to the next.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
That's what we'll think, Madam Chair. So on the electric utility partnership template, you've got up to seven buses listed there? So we're, we're doing eight. Does that need to be changed?
Yes, sir. Again, I think, I believe that's the outdated contract. The new one does, does reflect eight units.
Gotcha.
Madam Chair, because we were discussing seven last time, and I asked about the eighth bus. I wanted the eighth bus.
With a, with a wheelchair.
I don't think we did.
Yes, we did, we did, um...
Yeah, they, they get, are we negotiating for eight buses?
Well, that's what this contract is.
That's for eight buses.
I thought you mentioned...
Okay, Carol, it is, eight buses.
Okay, well, yeah.
And, and it seems like there's some conversation. I all mentioned the eighth bus was a wheelchair spec bus.
And, can I say one more thing?
Okay.
And I wasn't able to easily follow a buyout or an opt-out provision. Is that in the contract?
Yes, sir.
Where is it, if you wouldn't mention?
Again, in the, in the, in the updated version, or actually, the, the version you have that's outdated on the computer.
Well, we've got, I think we've got the updated one.
Yeah, that's the, that'll be the Sourcewell quote. There's a, there's a termination schedule that'll be in exhibit, and I, and I could point you to it. It's just that is going to be the Sourcewell quote that ties to the contract.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Absolutely.
And I, that's a question I had, and I had, we were able to discuss the, the contract and things earlier today. That's something I would like to look at from the legal side on our side.
Yes.
It is vague within the service agreement, but it does reference Exhibit A, which has the buyout that we would be faced with, should be, but, but the, the language in Exhibit A, it, it references customer, the quality. I didn't know that there was, after a certain period of time, an opt-out other than the loss.
Right.
So it, it's something that I think we need to play by a little more.
Well, the, the exhibits aren't attached to this one that we have in the package, right?
It's on the online version.
Well, the...
I don't, which, which, I have one, I have five.
Other than this one, the online's all I've ever found.
I was going to say, I have five attachments. I'm not really sure which one of the five. I don't see that on my attachments. I'm also missing some of them.
Do you see it, Walter?
Yes. What's, what's happened is, like, as conveyed earlier, somehow on the contract, or a stale contract that I put in the board office, I have the updated one now, so the service agreement, I can, I just got it, I can send it to you. Just add the Schedule A, this termination.
Yeah, I, I need to actually see it before I get it sent in.
I understand that, but I think what... Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
I think the difficulty that the board has is, I, I don't think that we're opposed for the, based on what I'm gathering, I mean, we do have questions, but I think the obstacle that we're having is, is that you want us to approve, and all of the documents are incorrect. So that's where I think everybody is a little uncomfortable, because this document is, is one thing, this one's another thing. Like, it would be a lot easier for us to make a decision if we had a clear, concise document that was attached, and it was not, well, this part's right, and then this part's right, and, okay, now, you know, she needs to also make an adjustment. So, you know, like, it, it's, it would look a lot better for us.
Yeah.
If it was proper paperwork.
I understand. And if I may, I, I do not want to influence what decision the board makes tonight. We have provided the correct documents. The correct documents just simply were not uploaded.
Uploading, yes.
Something incorrect was shared, and, and I want to leave it to the board on how to address that, and, and I'll answer my questions to the best, answer your questions to the best of my ability, but I do not want to influence the shape of that. And I know you would like to look at it yourself, Mr. Reeves, so...
So, uh, may I ask one question? I'm sorry, yeah. So are you looking for us to just give you guidance on moving forward to get a formal contract nailed down, or are you wanting approval to just go hands, you know, hands down, we're, we're in with this?
So, may I ask, are we still tied to the November 30th deadline?
That's exactly, Madam Superintendent.
The price change?
There's a time constraint. That's the question I want to ask, Madam Chair.
Or can we wait until the December 1st, second, December 2nd?
We, we, we could wait till December 2nd.
Madam Chair, we, we had this conversation earlier about washing out the details due to the current contract being uploaded and then table and the finalization, if it was desired to next meeting.
But that would not impact the amount of the rebate that we would get, correct?
It does not impact the rebate. It's, what becomes a concern is our, our build schedule. But if we're talking about November 30th versus December 2nd, that's a conversation I can have internally. I don't...
So we need to get back to this as soon as possible.
Okay. I mean, even if we had to do a, a special session, I think that we could do, do that if needed. I think, I, I just think, knowing, you know, what we're looking at, I think everybody would just feel a lot more comfortable if everything was actually as right.
Get all the data right, all the contracts correct and data right.
I think we would as well, and thank you for bringing that up. I would, I would love for the board to review the correct documents, and Mr. Reeves as well.
Madam Chair and Madam Superintendent, what are you all thinking, as early as we can, get this information from them, and so that we can proceed with this? Madam Superintendent and Madam Chair?
So as soon as I can have all the correct documents to have the attorney review, and then I can always call a special meeting, or Friday, just to review, are there any additional questions, why they are here, that I want to make sure everybody has their questions answered?
I have no questions.
I have, okay, have you more?
I had, I, I called, uh, Mr. Roderick, and then I called, uh, Mr. Copeland, and pretty much, it was the same thing. I mean, at first, it was started out for me, this was for me now. It started out 18, and then I seen 26 or 22, I forgot which, but I said, well, I don't know, I, I couldn't understand why it jumped like that. Then it was seven, then it was eight, and I know, I know you talked about the eight with the special aid. I understand that. So I, I didn't know about that either. So, I see that kind of part's incorrect. I did read down there where, uh, on the, on the, um, reimbursement for the, the maintenance or something, it was like $55 an hour. I don't know nobody around here that, or nobody, no mechanic that charges $55 an hour. They'd charge me $85 to fix my lawn mower.
Thank you.
It said up to $55 an hour.
I thought so, too, Frankie.
So I didn't know what that meant.
Right now, it's at $55 an hour for in-house mechanic. That's typically changing tires, windshield wipers, basic items like that, and then parts are at cost.
Excuse me.
We can adjust it, the cost associated to it, just to be transparent with you. If you wanted it higher, typically costs a little more money.
Well, it's up to you to get this stuff together and get it back to us as soon as possible, if you want us to, uh, act on it Friday.
Yes, ma'am. I, I will note, yeah, I will note the correct documents are in the inbox. If you have redlines for me, I can turn them around pretty quick.
Okay.
Um, I think mileage...
You can get with it?
Yep, and I think mileage is one piece, that if, if you did want to respond back, and from a comfortability standpoint, just have it higher, not a problem. That's an item we could adjust immediately.
So you go on, and I don't work on.
Do whatever you need. I would just say, again, from my side, there's, I, I personally, at this point in time, do not have any further action to provide. I think it's that the right documents get to you for review.
Correct, yes, sir.
And, and you do have them. I think it's, unfortunately, just not the correct one for this meeting, and I'm glad it was addressed.
Thank you so much. All right. It sounds like, uh, we will, um...
Need to table this.
Would we like to table or pull this from the agenda?
Madam Chair, I would like to table this until they get all the information, and then we can schedule a, um...
A special session.
Special session.
I second.
Okay. All right, I have a motion by Ms. Hagan to table this, and a second by Ms. Knight.
And if I suggest, if the, if the December 1 date's not going to change anything, why don't we do a December date? If they say it's going to change something, then let the superintendent set a special meeting.
Well, he said the only thing is it could impact their timeline for being able, the progression of getting it done. So if everybody's...
You mean deliver, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So we don't want them to be rushed.
Yeah.
I got you.
So, I mean, if we're all available Friday, I think we just make it available Friday.
I'm not available Friday.
You're out of town.
I am, unfortunately.
Can you call in?
Can you call in? Possibly, yeah. Just call in.
Okay. Ms. Gibson, get your gavel ready.
I'll get my gavel ready.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tyrone. So I have a motion by Ms. Hagan, a second by Ms. Knight, that we table this for a later date.
And, uh, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. All in favor of tabling this? All right, 5-0.
And I think, and Mr. Copeland, you've got all the documents, right?
I have received them the second.
Okay.
So, so could you go ahead and email them to the board members and to me, and do that?
Thank you. All right, we're going to move forward with...
Thank you, guys.
Item number 5.4, surplus items for Lee Elementary School and Pinetta Elementary School, and we are going to have Mr. Patrick White.
Good evening, everybody. It's been a long road to get to this point. Before you are the inventory surplus list for both Lee Elementary School and Pinetta Elementary School.
Okay.
Just requesting your permission to auction the items.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to go ahead, and I, Ms. Gibson, you said you had something you want to say, but I'm going to go ahead and call for a motion to approve the surplus items for Lee Elementary School and Pinetta Elementary School. Do I have a motion to approve the surplus items?
I move to approve the surplus items for Lee Elementary and Pinetta Elementary.
Second.
A second by Ms. Hagan, okay. Do we have any further discussion?
Yes, I had a very small request from someone in Pinetta, whose father actually built equipment and donated to the school, as well as other schools. And it's just, I guess what you're calling is the spring bouncing car.
Yes, ma'am.
There's, there's two or three out there.
Yes, ma'am.
In, in the back. I mean, they're, they've probably been there 30 or 40 years, and they'd like to get their cars.
Okay.
So I'm asking the board's permission that they can get the cars that the father actually made and put out there.
Okay.
I don't have my list, Ms. Gibson. Can you tell me, what, what's the exact wording on that list?
It was called a bouncy, no, spring bouncing car.
Gotcha.
It's on page seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're, they're way in the back. It's...
It's near the bottom.
Joey may have played on it, as a matter of fact. He knows what I'm talking about. They're...
Yeah, it's, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six items from the bottom on page seven of the document.
And probably no one else would even be interested in it.
Any further discussion?
I do. Um, and I, I didn't go through the list in its entirety. I just know that after we approved the Green Bill auction, there was a lot of stuff that was out there. Like, are we 100% positive that the schools have gone out there and have looked at all of this stuff? Like, I, I know that, I was very upset, because there were specific items that I was looking for, for our kindergarten teachers out there, that I was told we did not have, and they were out at that school, and I ended up buying them for the teachers on the auction. So, you know, like, are we sure that these teachers have all had the opportunity to make sure there's nothing out there that they can use for their classrooms?
Absolutely. I, I have sent numerous emails. I have contacted principals numerous times.
Okay, I understand that you contacted the principals, but...
And teachers.
Has that been communicated, that's been communicated to the staff as well?
100%.
Okay.
But, all right, well, I'm glad you brought, I think I brought that up earlier. Were they actually allowed to go there and see what was available, and...
They were asked specifically, do you need anything?
Well, the only thing is, they may, they may not...
Well, I understand that, like...
They may not know what they need, unless I see it.
So, a lot of, what we ran into, especially with Central School, is that those teachers wanted so many things, they could not function in their classroom. They had so much stuff. I mean, I'll be honest, teachers are hoarders. They love to hold on to stuff.
I, I, but I know what you're getting at, because the public is actually...
I did. I had a lot of teachers that were, that were disappointed with some of the stuff out there, you know, like, you know, like, the projector, like, there was, like, sleeves for, uh, what are you, laminating and things like, you know, that, that a lot of them, they were like, well, hey, I couldn't, like, and again, I know it's up to them to go out there, but I just want to make sure that the information's not just being communicated to administration and not reaching the staff, and they're get, they're getting ample opportunity to go out there and, and look at those items themselves.
I can do whatever. You, you tell me, I mean, the direction is, and, and what we brought from the committee to the board, and we said that we would not auction anything off without the schools being fully, I mean, to the max, with their supplies.
Right.
And, and I feel like we've done a good job of that.
I'm not saying that we've done a, a bad job. I'm just saying, in my, with...
Right.
I personally, like I said...
I loaded it.
I had specific items that I asked.
Yeah.
And I, I was forward when I looked at that auction, and I saw them on there.
There's, yeah, tens of thousands of items, 100%. Yeah, I agree with you on that. There's...
Is that...
I, I don't know how to ask that.
And I will also ask one more question, and I don't know the answer to this, and it may have already been addressed. I know that I did have a conversation with a private citizen in Pinetta as well. Was the plaque removed from the school for Ms. Beth?
I'll, it's not removed, but there's a...
But that is going to go to her.
That's going, yes.
Yes, we, we got to make sure we don't damage it.
We're getting special requests. I don't, I don't know anything about these special I don't know anything about these special requests now. So who decided? Are we going to decide it in the board? Uh, just going to decide on our own?
That's what she's asking.
So. Would, would someone like to, because you brought it up, Ms. Hagan?
Bring you up to date on it.
Uh, Ms. Knight, would you like to elaborate on what?
There's a dedication plaque out there to Mr. Buchanan. And his family would like to have that plaque.
So that should be presented here to the board so everybody would know what's what instead of people just going, getting what they want and whatever.
And that's why I'm asking. That's why I'm asking.
So.
I, I think that, you know, that should go to the.
Of course. But we want to do it kind of let everybody know.
I'm, I'm fine with that too. I mean, it's going to come down to how do you get it off the wall without breaking it?
That's the tricky part.
Well, I mean, again, that'll be, that'll be their call.
But they certainly deserve it.
That's up to them to decide.
Correct.
We can give it to them.
Yeah.
But it's up to them to decide without damaging anything how they're going to get it.
Right.
Is that a motion, Ms. Knight?
So we, well, we currently already have a motion on the table by Mr. Carroll and it was seconded by you, Ms. Hagan, to approve. We've had quite a bit of discussion. Given the discussion that we've had, how would the board like to proceed?
Well, I mean, I'll amend my.
We can go ahead and go on it and then Ms. Knight can ask for that request.
Well, he's willing to amend it minus the couple of items.
Yes.
Okay. So Mr. Carroll.
I would amend my, um, motion to exclude the bouncy cars.
Spring bouncy cars.
And I guess the plaque.
The dedication.
The dedication plaque for Mr. Randall.
The plaque I don't think was listed on here to.
I don't know if it is.
I know.
So I think the motion you're wanting is just to exclude the spring bouncy car. And then we probably need to go back and deal with the plaque.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Carroll to approve the surplus items for Pinetta Elementary and Lee Elementary. He amended his motion to exclude the spring bouncing cars. Ms. Hagan, does your second still stand? Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Carroll and a second by Ms. Hagan. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five zero, Ms. Tammy?
Family, thank you.
And so now you need to have a motion to dispose of the spring bouncing cars and the plaque. Because what you did was you took, you took them off the list.
Right.
So we'll add it, okay.
Now.
So now, do I need to do two separate, in two separate?
It's probably going to make more sense if you do two separate when you look at it.
Okay, okay. All right, so we will do the spring bouncing cars first and the plaque to the Buchanan family second. So I would entertain a motion to dispose of the spring bouncing cars from Pinetta Elementary School.
And I think it'd be the, to declare a surplus and dispose of them by allowing.
The family.
The family.
Well, but you gotta.
Do you have a family name?
Robert Hardy.
Robert Hardy.
Well, actually, his daughter Jennifer.
Okay.
To allow them to come get the.
Yeah, they'll have to come get it.
All right.
Robert is the father.
Okay.
And I'll second her motion.
All right. So we have a motion by Ms. Gibson. Did you make that motion?
No.
Who made that motion?
Oh, I thought Ms. Gibson did.
Do we, we didn't have a motion?
But I will make it.
I was going to say. She said second and I'm like, who made the motion?
I move to, whatever all y'all.
What all y'all said?
To declare the spring bouncy car surplus.
To declare, declare the spring bouncy car surplus and.
To dispose of them by allowing the Hardy.
Hardy family.
Hardy family to come get them. And that we're, y'all are declaring, I'm sure these things don't have any fair market value, right?
No, there's not.
And because there's no fair market value, you're giving them back to the person who donated it.
Okay, and my second still stands.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Carroll and a second by Ms. Knight to declare the spring bouncing cars surplus and allow the Hardy family to come and get those. All right, now.
Okay.
Now, we will entertain a motion to allow.
Y'all gonna vote?
Oh, sorry. All in favor? Five zero. Whew. All right.
Just gets complicated.
Next, let's move along to the plaque that is at Pinetta Elementary School. Do I have a motion to? You go ahead.
To declare it surplus and allow the Buchanan family to come get the plaque. Now, they're going to have to do it before conveyance is titled.
Correct.
And they're going to have to do it without substantial damage to the wall.
And so Madam Chair, I move to deem the dedication plaque for Randall Buchanan as surplus and return it to the Buchanan family.
Okay. Second. All right, so I have a motion by Ms. Knight, a second by Ms. Hagan. Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
Thank you so much for your work on this.
So, real quick, Ms. Gibson and Ms. Knight, if you will send me the names and the contact information of the families so I can get in touch with them.
Okay.
So that we can start moving forward on it.
I will, yes.
Because according to, uh, Mr. Muggie, he's looking at a, probably, he's going to try everything he can to get it done by November twenty-fourth to start the auction. That's, if everything goes perfectly this weekend for him, but if not, it will start around December the first.
Okay, and we will advertise that once it's.
Absolutely.
That way, because I did have some people ask.
December, for both schools, did you say?
Uh, we're going to do Lee first and then he'll run a concurrent one after that, or a separate one, excuse me, not concurrent.
Thank you so much, Mr. White. I know this has been a lot of work, so we appreciate you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move along to five point five. That was added as an amendment. That is the supplement salary schedule for MCCS and MCHS. I am going to entertain a motion to approve the supplement salary schedule. And I will state that I have a conflict with Mr. Thompson who is listed on the MCCS schedule. So I would like to recuse myself from that if we may have a motion excluding Mr. Thompson. And, Mr. Carroll, go ahead.
Yeah, I might, I'm going to have to recuse myself from the high school of my son.
I think we need to do Central and High School separately since you each have a conflict of interest so that way you can refuse.
Okay, so, so this is what I would ask. Could we just do a separate motion for Mr. Thompson and Mr. Carroll?
So the first thing is do Central with approving everybody but Mr. Thompson.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, I would move to accept the supplemental salary, salary schedule for Madison County Central School excluding Matt Thompson.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Ms. Knight and a second by Ms. Gibson to approve the Madison County Central School supplement salary schedule excluding Mr. Matt Thompson. Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
And so Madam Chair, you're declaring a conflict for Mr. Thompson because he's your spouse. And so of course you have to fill out that paperwork and all of that. And then I think the thing, you just get a motion and a second to approve Mr. Thompson, of course you wouldn't vote on it.
Right, okay. So do I have a motion to approve Mr. Matt Thompson for the supplement salary schedule for Madison County Central School?
I move to approve Mr. Matt Thompson for the supplemental salary schedule for the Madison County Elementary School.
Okay, do you have a second?
My second.
I have a motion by Ms. Hagan, a second by Ms. Gibson to approve Mr. Thompson. All in favor? Okay, I have four zero. All right, we're going to move on to Madison County High School and I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the Madison County High School supplement salary schedule excluding Mr. Jeremy Carroll.
I'm, excuse.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the Madison County High School supplement schedule excluding Jeremy Carroll.
Do I have a second? Okay. All right, I have a motion by Ms. Gibson, a second by Ms. Hagan to approve the supplement salary schedule for Madison County High School excluding Mr. Jeremy Carroll. All in favor? It's going to be four zero.
Well, excluding.
Oh, you're right, five zero, sorry. You're right. Five zero. Okay, now, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve Mr. Jeremy Carroll to, for the supplement salary schedule for Madison County High School. Do I have a motion to approve Mr. Jeremy Carroll?
Madam Chair, I move to approve Mr. Jeremy Carroll.
Hi, second. Sorry, go ahead.
And Madam Chair, and so, Mr. Carroll, you're.
Yeah, I wouldn't have to, he's my son, so I have to recuse myself from voting.
Okay. So I have a motion by Ms. Hagan, a second by Ms. Knight, all in favor of approving Mr. Jeremy Carroll. Four zero. Okay, moving on. We're going to move to item number five point six on the agenda. This was added as an amendment. This is Keane's Portable Buildings.
For you, so I apologize for having to do this, the, met with the insurance company today. So we have them given the approval for the Ag Barn. And so we have to go ahead and purchase it so we can save the taxes. However, it's twenty-seven thousand, you'll see that. And then I think that's like twenty-seven hundred for the baseball, one of the sheds there. So I do need your approval and then the insurance company will actually reimburse this for us. So I do ask for your approval for this.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Keane's Portable Building estimate.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Ms. Knight, a second by Ms. Hagan to approve the purchase of the Keane's Portable Building. Do I have any discussion?
Was, now, was one of them, did you say for the FFA?
The Ag Barn.
It's the barn.
Yes ma'am.
That we've been talking, okay?
Yes ma'am, and then the baseball.
And then the baseball, okay, thank you.
We're getting there.
Oh, yes.
Any more questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, I will now call for a vote to approve the Keane's Portable Buildings purchase. All in favor? Five zero, Ms. Tammy? All right. Then we're going to, Ms. Knight asked that we add item number five point seven, the property conveyance. I will ask, Ms. Knight, would you like to speak on?
Yeah, so a couple of things dawned on me after the fact and I did reach out to Dr. Pickles and asked about making some other recommendations. And she, Attorney Reeves suggested that we just bring it up so we could take a vote on it if everybody felt the same way. But one of the things that kind of struck me after the fact was just making sure that we also include a maintenance and upkeep requirement for the buildings just to make sure, you know, that the buildings are being maintained, making sure that they're including insurance, make sure they're maintaining insurance and things like that. I just, you know, I have all the best and high hopes for what we're going to do with these buildings, but at the end of the day, heaven forbid, something fall through. You know, I don't want to get back dilapidated buildings that, you know, we're not going to be able to do anything with. So I do, I would like to make sure that we include, you know, insurance requirements and maintenance and upkeep requirements.
And if I can address, and we can certainly do that. The issue with both of those is what are your objective criteria to decide have they done it? So, our, you know, with insurance, I guess, it, what you're talking about is not, we don't necessarily involve in liability insurance. It's casualty insurance if something happens there and that can be at a certain amount, you know, so we can say that. With maintenance and upkeep though.
How do you, how do you determine?
How do we know they're maintaining it well, good enough or not maintaining it good enough? What is, what's the criteria?
I mean, again, that's something that I think we need to discuss and consider because, I mean, we don't want to drive by and have the buildings looking like they're abandoned buildings with grass all over the place and things like that, you know? And again, I don't think that that's where we're going to end up with these building. I have, you know, a lot of hope of where we're headed with them. But at the same time, we also have to take into consideration that there's other buildings that have, the very same thing has been done with in the community and we all know what they look like. So, you know, I don't want to be a part of generating additional eyesores for the communities that, you know, these schools are, are sitting in.
My concern was putting a twenty-year sale clause for the Greenville school because it was given to the city for the community of Greenville. But my attorney, our attorney has said that has been taken care of in the original. Because see, you know, it changes hands. We get elected here, get elected there, and then Greenville might have something where they're going to rope the game. And they, you know, after so many years, they won't just sell it and, you know, put it in their treasury, but it was given for a community purpose.
Correct. Right. I don't see how we can demand that someone cut their grass. I mean, it's, it's almost like saying, I sold my house, but I want to make sure they take care of it.
Yeah, but we're not selling them, I mean, for the most part, you know, I mean, again, we're giving these buildings away and in hopes that they're going to meet the requirements of what their goals and expectations are. So, you know, I mean, even if it's for a certain period of time, I mean, I don't know. I'm just saying, like, I know what some of these other buildings look like around this community where the same thing has been done. And I'm, and again, I'm not saying that that's how these are going to end up. But I, what can we do and how do we protect ourselves from being a part of that?
Well, there's certainly no reason, conceptually, you can't do it. The, the issue would be, you know, what, what are the objective things that we're listing out that they have to do? So that you know whether they violated it or not, I mean, that's the answer. And I think you would certainly do that for a limited amount of time. I mean, all those buildings were constructed about ninety-nine, two thousand. The useful life of those buildings is not going to be, you know, but, you know, ten, twenty years more, I would assume. So you would think you would probably put a timeline of, say, twenty years on that. Do we have a, you know, we, I guess we could put a schedule of some type, a maintenance schedule. Grass cannot be higher than blank. Has to be repainted every number of years.
I don't want to put a financial burden on it.
That's putting too much on it.
Yeah, I'm not.
I just don't see how we can go in and see, you know, if the building's has been maintained on the inside.
Yeah, I'm not looking to put a.
With insurance with that. But now maybe on the outside, the upkeep on the outside.
Yeah.
Just suggests that it looks presentable.
Mm-hmm. And then every now and then, us homeowners, every now and then, we go on vacation and our grass get overgrown.
I just, I'm not saying that somebody's going to be driving by measuring the grass every day. I'm just saying that I don't want it to end up, any of them end up looking like some of the other dilapidated buildings that we have in town.
Like with a lot of things legally, everybody kind of knows the concept, which is do right. The challenge is, what are, what's the objective elements where I know that they violated it or they haven't? That's the challenge. So, you know, we, we got to figure out some objective things to say, you know, what you do. And I, I don't know of any, I mean, I'm not.
Right.
Because, yeah, you, you want them to do right, but now I don't want to go expect that every.
No.
That's their real interest.
I mean, you know what I'm saying?
I'm not looking to be code enforcement. I'm just saying like, you know, and again, let's, and what if they're not carrying property insurance? And a hurricane comes the next year and blows the building away? And now they're like, okay, it's your problem.
Well, and you would, you would not always say carry it, but you have to use the proceeds to repair it.
Yeah.
Right, so it wouldn't be, it burned down, now we just put the money in a pocket.
Correct, yes sir.
Walk on. So that's easy enough, but.
I'm very adamant about that, maybe not so much as the grass being cut, but the insurance is a little more.
When you start getting, again, you have to remember, you might not live by one of these schools. But if you lived near one of these schools and it started to look like, say, the building, you know, the old building on, okay, you know.
The hospital was in charge of that.
Right, correct. So, you know, those are.
But that is sad, dude, to ride by that school and see it like that.
They owned that property and they just sold that property, what, about six, six months or so ago?
Yeah, and I know they're working on grants to rehab that building, but in the meantime, it, it was left to just sit and fall apart and look that way.
Yeah.
And it's a best of whatever it is, they can do anything to it because, I mean, the hospital maybe, but.
Well, you, it would be very expensive to do it. You have to get the moonsoaps and.
Until you got the money, mm-hmm.
But it's, it's still sad to see that campus look like that.
It is.
And that's the same thing.
Now, it's been some cleanup, three consecutive weeks in a row. They have cleaned, when they acquired that property, and then outside and start cleaning. And that part that's falling down, they got to be careful with it because of that hazmat, best of whatever it is.
Right. And again, like, like with Mr. Kellett, like, he's got huge plans for these buildings. We don't know how long it's going to take him to do a lot of what he's doing. So in the meantime, I don't, you know, like, it shouldn't be an eyesore for the community while, you know, things are being completed. So I'm not exactly sure how we word it or what we do. I just feel like we owe the citizens that responsibility to make sure that we're not just getting rid of these buildings and, you know.
Well, if it would be okay, why don't I see if I can find some criteria to email to everybody and y'all look at? But, but yeah, I mean, you're, everybody's describing the exact problem. And the problem is, you can be as specific as you want, but now are we going ride by there in 30 days?
Correct. Like I said, I'm not looking for us to be code enforcement or put any more financial constraints on what the requirements are. I just, for me, it's basic repairs and maintenance upkeep so that it is not an eyesore in the community.
And one of the things with things like that is you could give them, you know, I have seen with restricted covenants like that, that you would say, okay, if we see it this way, we're gonna give you a notice, and you got 30 days to fix it. And so, we're not just, it's not a gotcha.
Yeah.
But you really do have to do it.
Yeah, I'm not saying to add this, like, you know, like, we want these buildings back.
Simple language in there, simple upkeep and whatever. So, we gonna go and give them a notice.
You can make it as simple as you want. The problem, though, with simple is whether they violated it or not.
Right.
And we're not gonna make that decision, a judge would ultimately make that decision.
Exactly, see.
It's gotta be specific enough that a judge knows that they violated it or not. Okay.
But if you don't mind sending the recommendations to us via email, that would be fantastic. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. We are going to move on to items for individual consideration, financial and HR. We have Mr. Copeland to discuss our personnel changes.
Good evening. We have a few items of personnel to recommend tonight. The first being recommendation for appointment, two of our tenured instructors, Ms. Linda McFarlane and Ms. Lily Moore, to serve as hospital homebound and our community educator instructors. These duties would be on an hourly basis in addition to their current roles, and their hourly pay would be equal to what their current hourly pay is in their current roles. And as you've seen in the write-up, a person in this position shall provide instruction to homebound students to ensure an own get-going education. So, we would ask that y'all consider approving these appointments this time.
I will entertain a motion to approve the recommendation for appointment for our hospital homebound and community educator instructors. Do I have a motion?
No, Chair, I move that we approve the recommendation of Mrs. McFarlane and Mrs. Moore for our homebound teachers.
My second. All right, I have a motion by Ms. Hagan, a second by Ms. Knight. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Five zero.
The next items are personnel changes, and we just have a few here. You'll, in your package, you have one recommendation, food service worker. And then, we have three resignations, and we have one leave of absence request. And we would ask that y'all consider those and approve these personnel changes.
Okay.
Well, we have a retirement and two resignations.
Oh, I apologize. I read that incorrectly. You're correct. A retirement, two resignations, and one leave of absence request.
Okay. I will now entertain a motion to approve the personnel changes.
I move to approve the personnel changes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Ms. Gibson and a second by Ms. Hagan. Any discussion on our personnel changes? All in favor? Five zero, Ms. Hagan.
And I think I may have, should have included this before, but we do have two requests for approvals of sub custodians.
Do you have any of them, do you?
Well, I think we ate them all up in the last few meetings. Yes, ma'am, but none this time.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the substitute custodians as listed on board docs.
I move to approve the substitute custodians.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Carol and a second by Ms. Hagan. Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero to approve the substitute custodians. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. We are going to move on to superintendent items. Dr. Pickles.
So, I do appreciate you allowing me to indulge and honor our students tonight. Our teachers will be later this week. It's something, I receive daily attendance reports, so, or really, our absenteeism for our staff. And it's kind of like, how can we try to change our attendance and try to promote the attendance and try to get all of our staff to be here every day? It's a little disheartening when you see a large amount of our staff that are out. So, kept talking to Mr. Copeland and trying to brainstorm, so that's when we started and came up with this idea. So, but also really wanting to recognize our students, because that's a lot. And that's a big deal when you look at our attendance for our kids. And so, I did want to reboard them. So, these were gift cards that we had leftovers, so we did not have to go purchase them. They were sitting there. So we had quite a large dollar amount that were out there. So we will do this every quarter for our students and our staff. And so, I do appreciate that. I also want to remind you of our event at North Florida College tomorrow for Dr. Page. I sent you all the calendar invites, and we're at 4:00 tomorrow. And then, I just want to remind you of our Thanksgiving holiday that's coming up. We have a lot to be thankful for. It also seems like time is flying by.
It is.
People have Christmas and all of a sudden, guess what? We're then into our spring. And then it's like, oh, we're into testing, so when we come back, kids will be testing. And then we're into that spring season. So, we have a lot to be thankful for this time of year. So, I wish everybody a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. And I know when we come back, we'll have our meeting, and we have two meetings, actually, our board meeting, then we'll have our board workshop, and then we head off to FSBA FAS training. That's all I have at this time.
Attorney Reeves?
Just wanted to bring you up on the, bring up the date on the lawsuit. We, so preparing the lawsuit, or the, I'm sorry, the motion for temporary injunction, one of the things you have to do now under the present rules of procedure, you gotta call the other side, talk to them about it and all that. Of course, I did it. The, and of course, my, what I was talking to them about was, you know, why do y'all think you should be here? You don't even have a lease or anything. Well, of course, they came back and said, oh, yeah, we do. I'll send you a copy of it. So I got a copy of a lease. Now, the lease that they have was from 2003 to 2023. So it's a 20-year lease, but it expired in 2023. And then it provided that they could renew, but they had to do so before the original lease expired. So we have, Dr. Pickles has been looking through our records. We have not found a copy of that lease, I think.
I haven't yet.
And we haven't found where they renewed it timely or anything. And then they haven't said they renewed it timely, but they just, they sent that lease. So anyway, that's what was getting that incorporated into the motion. So we should have that done tomorrow. But just bring up speed on what we found.
Okay. Ms. Hagan?
No, thank you.
I'm feeling very thankful tonight. I'd like to recognize Greenville Elementary, Lee Elementary, and Pinetta Elementary Schools for their recipients of the school recognition program. I want, I just, it's a very short thing about that. It provides public recognition and financial awards to schools that sustained high student performance or schools that demonstrate substantial improvement in their student performance. And those three schools did during the '24, '25 school year, and through a lot of hard work and dedication. And Mr. Copeland, when will they be getting their money?
In December.
Okay, thank you.
We just received a deposit Friday.
Okay, thank you for that information. I'd also like to recognize and thank three employees who will be leaving and retiring in the district. Both Suzanne Griffin and Glendale Presley have dedicated many years teaching and inspiring our students at Madison County High School. Both have advanced degrees and will surely be missed, and thank you and enjoy your well-deserved retirement. I have the privilege of attending Veterans Day programs at Madison County Central School, James Madison High School, and Madison Creative Arts. Our flag, the veterans, the country, and freedom were highlighted during the assemblies. These programs provide students with knowledge and also they teach respect by just listening to it all. I'd like to congratulate the perfect attendants, but I'd also like to congratulate the parents who are responsible for getting them up every day and going to school. So that's, they actually need a little something, too, probably. You know, foreign for them, they wouldn't be here. And Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and I appreciate you.
Mr. Carol?
Oh, wait, wait, I forgot one thing. I'm sorry. One more employee, a very important one, Mr. Philip Hackel. He's been with the county for 22 years, and I call this man a jack of all trades. He can basically do it all. So good luck in your next chapter, and you will be missed, and thank you very much.
Mr. Carol?
Just wanna thank everybody for all they do. I know they have a tough job. I really hope that, I think Ms. Brown said that there was a numerous amount of students that didn't, it's a day they just get pulled out of the hat. That's my luck, too. So, anyway, we appreciate them for coming to school. Hopefully, they get a ice cream or something.
I, too, would like to congratulate all of our retirees. I hope you guys enjoy your retirement. You know, we thank you for your dedicated time and service to our students. I'd like to thank Kylie and Rachel for coming and doing our prayer this evening. It's always great to see our students in action and see them working and participating. I would like to just mention a couple of things that have been going well with some of the schools. In addition to our Cowboys winning their first playoff game, we had Cadence Easton, who placed 16th out of 72 for, at regionals in our golf team. And our FFA traveled to national convention, and they were also at the Northwood Fair where we had multiple students place and come home with some awards. I, too, would like to congratulate our perfect attended students and parents. Again, it's just as much work, like Ms. Gibson said, for the parents to make sure those kids are here as it is for the kids to be here themselves. And I would also like to congratulate our school-related employee of the year, Ms. Michelle Carter. And I would also like to congratulate all of our school-related employees from every school district. We had very stiff competition with the candidates to choose from this year. We had Tammy Richardson, who represented us from the district office. We had Mr. Barry Cruz, who represented us from transportation. Ms. Gracie Tompkins, who represented Madison County Central School. Jennifer Hendry, who represented Madison Creative Arts Academy. Morgan Scurry, who represented James Madison Preparatory. And then, of course, Michelle Carter, who represented Madison County High School. So I just wanna say congratulations to all of them, and thank you for everything that you do. And a very heartfelt congratulations to Michelle. It is well deserved for you to be our school-related employee of the year. So, thank you.
Ms. Knight just took my speech. I was gonna say the exact same thing as far as our school-related employees of the year. I'm very thankful for each one of you. It was a wonderful event to be able to attend and celebrate you this past week. Very thankful for Ms. Tammy, who keeps us all in line. You're the glue that keeps us together up here. So thank you, Ms. Tammy. Thank you to Mr. Barry, Ms. Gracie, Ms. Jennifer, Morgan, and Ms. Michelle for winning the school-related employee of the year for the district. I would also like to, I've been thinking about this, as I've taken over the spot of the chair, I wanna do something fun moving forward. And I will probably send out an email soon. I wanna, I wanna get you guys involved in something and ask for our staff members to start nominating some of you, some of your fellow staff members. And I would like to recognize you at the school board meeting and do some staff shout-outs. So that could mean shoot me an email and just brag on a fellow staff member. And so we're gonna start something fun, because I think it's good to talk about the good stuff that's going on. So look forward to an email that I'll be sending out soon with a little direction on that, and we'll start recognizing some of our staff members, some shout-outs from fellow staff members coming up. So, I hope you guys have a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. Don't eat too much turkey. Hope you enjoy some much-needed rest and time off, and thank you all for everything you do.